Good eve- good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's council meeting. We are very pleased to have the Williamsburg Public School Grade Six Choir with leaders Kristi Stanzel and Anita Redwood here this evening to lead us in the singing of our National Anthem, "O Canada." And so I would invite everyone now to stand as you're able and join us and our choir in "O Canada." Thank you, boys and girls, for coming in and singing our National Anthem for us tonight. And thank you to all the mums and dads for bringing them along this evening as well. You're more than welcome to stay for the council meeting if you'd like, but if you choose not to, we won't be offended. Also want to acknowledge, we just finished a little earlier this evening, our My Ideal City project, where we had a group of grade fives and sixes who served as council and had a mock debate about dog parks earlier this evening. It was a vibrant and vigorous discussion, and I see one of our student councillors in the audience still. So I want to acknowledge Colin and thank him and all of the students who are here for participating in that program earlier. It's been moved by Councillor Frank Etherington that the minutes of the regular meeting held April 25th and the special meetings held April 25th, May 2nd and 9th, as mailed to the mayor and councillors be accepted. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? There being none, and there is one communication referred to file, and that's a flag request under Policy I-442 for council's information. And now we'll move into our presentations, and we have a presentation by Gerry Van Udeghem, our President and CEO of Kitchener-Wilmore-Hydro, and Mr. Phillips, the Board Chair, to present the 2015 Annual Report, as well as share some good financial news. And just before I take our first delegation, council may notice that we do have a new temporary hire in the council chamber this evening, and that's Mike Farwell. And Mike has been hired by council to actually assist, as the council page this evening, as part of his "Farwell for Hire" campaign to raise dollars for cystic fibrosis. And so we want to thank Mike for being here this evening, and I think it's the page who's going to appreciate you being here the most, because I think all of us are very thirsty this evening, and so we might, we might, we, oh, look, Councillor Galloway-Seelock doesn't have a glass. There we go. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Van Udeghem.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Thank you for giving us a bit of time on your agenda this evening. As Board Chair, I bring greetings and also checks this evening from the Board of Kitchener-Wilmore-Hydro Incorporated. In just a minute, Gerry will present to you our annual report for 2015, a year of many challenges, but certainly overall, it was a very successful year for the organization. Our board is very proud of the customer service that is provided by our hard-working staff, and certainly we believe our organization is well-managed consistently. KWHI is rated as one of the most efficient and effective LDCs in the province. So with that brief introduction, I'll ask Gerry to come forward and give you his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening. This worship may ever benefit councillors, senior staff, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure once again to be here this evening to present to you the annual report for Kitchener-Wilmore-Hydro. As usual, I'll start with a few statistics. We added 1,259 new customers during the year, which equates to a growth rate of 1.4%, and that was slightly higher than the year previous. We are seeing a steady decline in both kilowatt-hour consumption and monthly kilowatt demand over the last three, actually four years, even though our peak demand in 2015 was slightly higher than the previous year. There are a number of reasons for this, and of course, higher energy prices are part of that reason. Conservation efforts made by our customers are showing an impact. A loss of large industrial customers, including Maple Leaf Foods, certainly hit us in 2015, and growing behind the meter generation installations such as solar and natural gas generation are having an impact on our peak demand. I will briefly mention that, before I get into some financial numbers, that the statements look very different this year than in the past, and that's because we have transitioned to IFRS financial statements from CGAP statements that you are familiar with from before. And this was a requirement of the Accounting Standards Board. I won't try and explain the differences in any detail, other than to say that it meant that we had to restate our 2004 financial statements into the new format, IFRS format, so we had a starting point for 2015, and then we had to do 2015 statements as well. The net impact is not great on the bottom line. Our net income went down by $264,000 in 2014 when we restated those financial statements. Most of the differences are in the presentation, and that's about as much as I'll say about the changes. Total revenue for last year increased by four and a half percent to $247.6 million, and this is an increase of $10.6 million from the previous year, and it's primarily due to higher energy charges, which is the blue part of the pie chart. Almost 83% of our total revenue is for electric energy charges. That's collected by Kitchener-Wilmore-Hydro on behalf of other parties. Distribution revenue for the year was up slightly from the previous year by 1.8%, and a couple reasons for this. There was a small rate increase improved by the OEB, effective January 1, 2015, of 1.45%, and the growth in our customer base that I mentioned previously. So Kitchener-Wilmore-Hydro's, this is the average bill for a Kitchener-Wilmore-Hydro customer, an 800 kilowatt-hour-a-month customer, and the total bill as of January 1, 2016 is now $142.53. Kitchener-Wilmore-Hydro's charges, as a percentage of this bill, are down to 17%, or $23.85. In fact, when I went back and looked over the last 10 years, Kitchener-Wilmore-Hydro's rates have gone up 19.0% over the last 10 years, and inflation has gone up 19.2% over that same period of time. The same can't be said for the rest of the bill, however. So how does a residential bill of a Kitchener-Wilmore-Hydro customer compare to those in the rest of the province? Our average residential bill was the seventh lowest in the province among 72 local distribution companies, and that compares to the ninth lowest rate the previous year. So certainly, our customers are getting great value from Kitchener-Wilmore-Hydro. Total expenses for the year added up to $236.6 million, and that, 86.6% of that is, represents the energy that we buy on behalf of our customers. Controllable expenses for the year amounted to $16.2 million, and that compares to $17 million from the year previous. So this is a decrease of $874,000. As mentioned, our controllable costs went down for 2015 compared to 2014, and here are three bars. One represents Kitchener-Wilmore-Hydro's controllable costs in blue, our budget in green, and the provincial average in red. So again, you can see that our costs were significantly lower than the provincial average, in fact, 49% lower, as published by the Ontario Energy Board. And this was, this was for 2015. Now, this is a bit of anomaly. There were no major storms for us in 2015, so we didn't incur any significant costs. That's changed already this year with the storm at Easter. And the other, the other anomaly is that we had a lot of billable work in 2015. So there were a lot of our engineering costs or admin costs were charged against that billable work, and hence it lowered our own controllable costs. So I would not expect this trend to continue. I expect our controllable costs will go up, but certainly 2015 was a very good year for us. And most of that billable work, as you can well imagine, was for the LRT project, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. So how do our controllable costs compare to other utilities in Ontario? Well, in fact, we have the fourth lowest controllable cost in the province, and again, that's a decrease from the year previous. In fact, Hydro One Brampton likely won't be around next year as part of the purchase of the Greater Toronto merged utility. So the, and the other two utilities are very, very small. One's only 5,500 customers, and the other one's 12,000 customers. So certainly, this is a key to us, to be able to keep our rates low, is to keep our controllable costs very low. So that resulted in a net income of $11 million for 2015, which is an increase of $624,000 from the year previous. I mentioned earlier that the LRT kept us very busy last year, and this chart shows where we spent our capital last year compared to the previous three years. So the, the blue portion is billable work that is not LRT. So that would be in growth situations, where we're expanding our distribution systems, such as subdivision areas, or where we have to reinforce our grid to bring, to supply new customers. The orange is the LRT expenditures, and these dollar, these are in millions of dollars. So last year, we spent about $7.5 million doing relocations for the LRT project. The gray part is the, sort of the internal projects that we normally would do, rebuilding of aging infrastructure. And so you can see that we've decreased that expense as we've ramped up the LRT expense. And in some ways, that's okay, because a lot of the relocations we're doing, especially in downtown Kitchener, was very old infrastructure anyways. So we managed to rebuild that with new. But it just kind of shows the picture of how, you know, how much an impact the LRT has had on us. I'll just quickly go through a few service performance indicators. Our reliability numbers were excellent, in fact, the best in the last five years in 2015. Again, no storms. The first indices is the duration of the outages in minutes, the average duration, and the second one is the average, is the frequency of outages. So, you know, the, now, this does exclude one event that happened in July when we lost power from Hydro One's transmission lines to our grid, but the numbers are excellent. One of the things that we've also done for, is we've invested in an outage management system for 2015 that will help us communicate to customers where the outages are. And part of that outage management system includes an outage map that will be available on our website, and we expect to make that public by the end of June, so look for that. These are some other service quality performance indicators.
Sorry, Gerry, just, just have a fair bit to go?
Nope.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Okay. So this one is how we've done compared to the OEB standard. Again, we've met all the minimum requirements, and, you know, our, one of the things to note is the telephone accessibility. Our calls are up 40% so far this year from last year. This one is a slide that shows both our conservation programs, the amount of gigawatt-hours we've saved, and the amount of solar generation that's connected to our system. And 2015 has been our biggest year so far with respect to conservation initiatives. And then finally, this is some of the community initiatives that we continue to support with some grants at Conestoga College, the Centre in the Square grants, as well as the tree reforestation grants. And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you very much. Now, before we answer questions, our Chair has a couple of presentations he'd like to make, and I know that's what you've been waiting for.
You sure you don't want to hold on on the amounts until you see what the questions are like? We'll take, we'll take the announcement first, just to be safe.
We had two envelopes to cover off those two scenarios.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor. So as Gerry had mentioned, with net income being up, we're very pleased this evening to be able to let you know that both shareholders will also receive higher dividends as a result of that. So we do have payment for you this evening, the first one being the large one, the dividend check, in the amount of $4,67,948. And also, smaller amount, but I think certainly important, the reforestation grant that we've been able to give in the past, which has been $45,000, we've increased that by a further $25,000. So this year, the reforestation amount will be $70,000. So those are the two checks we have for you this evening.
Well, thank you very much for both of those, and I'll ask you to give them to the, our trustworthy check receiver, Dan Chapman, and want to say thank you on behalf of the taxpayers in the city of Kitchener. That cert, those dollars certainly go a long way towards dealing with some of the challenges we face as a municipality, and the additional dollars in forestry will certainly be put to good use. As you know, we've been dealing with the Emerald Ash Bore and so on, and so we're certainly appreciative of the fact that the board decided to invest those additional dollars to, to help with that or other forestry initiatives. We do have several questions, so I'll start with Councillor Nitski.
Thank you for your presentation and the money. It's always nice to see money coming this way as opposed to being handed out. Couple of questions for you. In your presentation, in your slide, a figure caught my eye, and I want you to confirm it, that of the money that, I guess, the average customer pays, 17% goes to Kitchener-Wilmore-Hydro. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And the other 83% goes to who?
It goes to other third parties, so the cost of energy, the commodity itself that is paid to the generators who generate the electricity, transmission company who delivers it from the generating site to the Kitchener boundaries. Those charges are in there as well, as well as certain other regulatory charges from the IESO.
Now, you mentioned you had a revenue of $247.6 million. Is that revenue to Kitchener-Wilmore-Hydro, or is that just the total?
That's the total revenue. So that's the total amount that we've paid and collected, but most of it is just a pass-through.
So how much would you?
But we're on the hook for collecting all of it, basically.
You're on the hook for collecting all of it?
Yeah.
So how much would you keep of that 17%?
So we keep about $38.8 million, we keep.
38?
.8, I believe it is.
Okay, somewhere around that.
Yep.
Okay. And you indicated that inflation over the last 10 years was for 19.2%, and your rates have gone up only 19%. Just, just a shade under inflation, correct?
Yeah, they've been tracking pretty close. There's been some years their rate increases have been slightly higher, some years slightly below rate of inflation. But when I went back 10 years to 2006 and calculated it forward, that's right.
So when you mention figures like that, the customer should be happy. Should be.
We're doing our part, but it's not, it's only 17% of the bill.
And that's what I wonder, because when you look at your bill and you, when you read the results in the papers, and you hear it from just regular people you talk to, jeez, my bill is up so high, and it's really all those other charges, the other 83% that have gone up astronomically, debt charges and stuff like that?
Yeah, the, the debt charge has now been removed, so that's excluded from, from this calculation, because it ended at the end of last year. But yeah, it's all those other third-party charges that account for the remaining increase.
And those increases could be somewhere between 60 and 70% over the 10-year period of inflation?
Yeah, yeah, the way, based on my calculations, is about 66%.
So you guys are doing your job, but the rest of the other people aren't?
Well, you know, I mean, there, if we remember, there were some, we were, back in 2005, we were asking people to reduce their energy load. So I mean, there was a point in time where, in fact, we were in dire straits. There was not enough generation capacity. But 2008 hit that had a big impact. Certainly, there's other more expensive forms of generation that are now online because of the off-coal policy, so that's contributed to costs, transmission rebuilds, so, but those costs have gone up a lot faster than what we've managed to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, and gentlemen. Always a pleasure to see you, especially when you're bringing $4 million checks. My question is, again, on a little, I want to touch a little bit upon the work that KW Hydro does compared to some of its local competitors. You showed up, you showed a slide earlier that the annual residence bill in Kitchener, and I quickly grabbed our comparator to the north, Waterloo North Hydro, it looks like it's about $10 less each and every month. That's, that's a significant, that's a significant amount of money, saving 120-plus dollars a year. Is there a simple explanation for why that is, or is it more of a thousand little things?
Yeah, I don't know that there's any one reason. I mean, I, you know, I firmly believe that, you know, the support of our board and previous commissions to that, that take a long-term view on managing our assets, you know, is responsible for, for much of the, you know, much of the leveling of costs over the last number of years. So many utilities, and you've probably read, and Toronto Hydro and others, that have had these infrastructure deficits, and now have had to hugely increase their budgets to replace some of the aging infrastructure that's past its end of life. You know, we've been very fortunate in that our boards and our commissions have given us adequate funding to replace our aging infrastructure. I think that's got a lot to do with it, and we do watch our costs very closely, certainly, and try and keep our overheads down, which, you know, contributes to very low controllable costs. But infrastructure in good shape means we, you know, we can, our maintenance costs are a bit less than they might otherwise be.
So would you say then that that, sorry, but would you say that delta then in going forward will be, is sustainable?
Yeah, I would say so. We're in the ballpark. I mean, you have to allow for inflation on the current dollars, but if we can continue to have the kind of budgets that we have today, I think it's sustainable for us.
Maybe just one brief comment from a board perspective, and I guess this relates to my earlier comment about our view of the management of the organization. I think it's also true to say that the amount of debt being carried by our LDC is lower than many, and obviously, that reflects then in terms of the costs of that debt.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. You know, with the snow this weekend and with you bringing checks, you could swear it's Christmas again. But first of all, I just want to thank you, gentlemen, and, you know, for everything you do for KW Hydro. It's, it's, every year in year and out, it just shows what a, what a quality organization the whole organization is, and it's a great asset to our community and to all of our customers, so I want to thank you for that. But one of the questions I wanted to ask you, and it's something I continually hear, and I really don't know that, I can kind of figure out what the answer is, but what I would like to know is, when you hear in the general realm of the public that when they're conserving energy, why is their bills going up? Can you just give us a Coles Notes version of that?
Yeah, it's, I mean, the, if you're using the same amount of electricity, then it's correct, the bills are going up. If you're using less electricity than you did the year before, then obviously, the total bill will be smaller, because the kilowatt-hours being charged are less. But there are a lot of fixed costs in the electrical distribution system, and we're no different. We are an infrastructure company, first and foremost. So a lot of those costs, you know, happen, and it's not... ...this evening, and for your generous contribution, back to the shareholder and the municipality. Thank you. Have a great evening. We'll now move on to delegations. I would like to remind delegations, they have five minutes to make their presentation. However, the first delegation has three members associated with it, so consistent with council's rules, they can have up to 10 minutes to make their presentation. And that's Tony Highland, Gabriel Machioni, and Rob Machioni from Beyond Oz Productions. Gentlemen, if you want to come forward? Are all three of you coming up, or?
I've been left with the honors.
Oh, okay. Well, still noted as all three of you. Go ahead.
I guess this is a continuation from the last time I was present in this chamber, where we did a formal presentation with respects to the event that's being held at Bingamans, June 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And I would just like to add that I understand that there was a deferral that occurred with respects to that decision, but I... But, I hope everyone here, and I'm sure the community appreciates the impact that sometimes these decisions have on the prosperity of the region and the city with respects to these events, and the fact that the decision, although central and specific to the city, is being viewed by the world. I can tell you that the day following the deferral decision, we received notification from all parts of the world with concerns as to whether the event was going to carry on in the form that would be appropriate for patrons to attend. And so, we spent quite a bit of time, as opposed to celebrating what this event is about and promoting, you know, to the potential patrons, the reasons for attending. We had to deal with a lot of diffusing and explaining that the event will most indeed go forward, and there is support by the community and the councillors that represent the community. So, I hope that, you know, the decision is a favorable one. We would like to make our time here long, not, you know, specific just to this year or the year past. We want to establish a long-term relationship, and we want to not only have our event be a successful event going forward, but we would like to have other promoters and other event organizers treat Kitchener and Waterloo as a real destination point for these types of things, and expand beyond what we are doing here with respects to the genre, bringing in other genres that maybe can provide some entertainment to a broader community base. And that way, have more than one faction of the city and the residents of the city exposed to some entertainment. So, I leave it in your hands to decide what's appropriate for the city and in particular the region. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have several questions for you. Councillor Davy.
Thank you, and thanks again for coming in. And I will say that I do regret some of the things that your organizations had to deal with. That certainly wasn't our intent. If you'll permit a brief comment. Yes, the, I would say, the response from residents at the last event was very, very significant. So, our responses at council had to be very significant, and to your credit, the changes that you've made are very, very significant as well. And I really do appreciate that. And I'm hoping that it's going to be enough to solve all the problems. Having said that, my one question is, you didn't touch upon in your comments the revised exemption requirements. Are you comfortable complying with the requirements as they are now laid out, as they've been revised?
I believe we can manage with that, you know, with the structure that's presented forward.
Okay. So, again, and the general approach is that if we find that for whatever reason, there are significant concerns after the first night or two, that there's a reactionary approach coming into the Sunday evening, and that's something you're prepared to look, to work with then?
Yes. One of the suggestions that was made and was discussed with Nois Bala representatives was that, as opposed to, obviously, be reactionary, but as opposed to solely being reactionary, let's try to be more assertive, and so undertaking the measurements in more critical locations, more relevant locations, so that maybe we can preempt some complaints prior to the complaints coming, if any. And so, we're definitely, you know, responsible enough to say that we're definitely going to move forward in that direction.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Mayor, I don't think I can move this because it's not in my committee, but I will certainly be supporting it.
It'll actually be coming from councillor Galloway-Seelock.
Yes, I will be supporting. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Marsh.
Thank you for coming in again, and, you know, I wonder if you can appreciate that the type of diffusion that you had to deal with after, you know, the deferral. You know, it was very similar to the type of diffusion that the councillors whose residents were affected last year had to, you know, also work around because there was a lot of disappointed and upset residents at all hours of the day and night. So, just wanted to ask if you can appreciate that.
Most definitely. I appreciate the challenges that you faced representing the people that put you here. Most definitely.
Okay. No problem. So, I had to form it in a question. But, basically, also, I want to ask you, for next year, will it be within the scope of your festival for you to assign the leading, the leading closing act an earlier end time? So, you would have the festival end at 9:30 rather than at 11:00? Or, to have it be a Friday and Saturday event rather than an event that also runs late on a Sunday?
Well, one of the suggestions I had made in my conversation with staff was that it would, possibly could be something that we look at, where if we were to be granted a little longer time on the Friday and the Saturday, we can definitely curtail the Sunday. It seems to me that the biggest concern that everybody has is the Sunday, more so than the Friday and the Saturday. I think this year, we'll be able to clearly identify if our efforts with respects to the engineering of the site itself were sufficient. But nonetheless, if we're going to get complaints, I would imagine that the majority of them might very well be on the Sunday. So, if we do things that work together, give me a little, we can definitely do something on the Sunday. There's no necessity for having the event run till 11 o'clock on the Sunday. What there is, is a necessity to create a proper communicated experience. And so, if we know going in that Sunday will be a 10 o'clock night or a 9:30 night, as you've suggested, if we can give the paying patron more value on the other days, I don't see why that would be a problem.
So, for example, an earlier start time on the Friday or Saturday?
Maybe going till 12 at night on the Friday and Saturday. Because, keep in mind, this is a population.
I thought that's where you're going with that.
That is where I was going.
I think that's for a later discussion.
That's very good.
I'm not too hopeful about that one for you, but all the best with your festival. I hope that it goes well, and I hope that the kids who come wear earplugs, you know, just to protect their ears. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Fernandez.
Thanks, Tony, for coming in. And all the accommodations that I think you're trying to make to make this festival not only successful for you, but amenable to the concerns that the residents have expressed, both to their councillor and to other councillors. I wasn't in that group. I didn't receive any complaints. I want to know if your hope is to expand this festival, maybe not on that particular weekend or another time during the year. Is that something that you're looking into doing, or are you partnering with other festival organizers to bring them to the city?
Our hope is most definitely to expand in multiple ways. We'd like to expand the existing festival, the Ever After experience, to include a broader use of Mr. Binghamman's facilities. We'd also like to expand that from, going from, you know, we started with two days and went to three days or two and a half days. We'd like to see that evolve as well, so that we can create a bigger experience. And we are most definitely looking at expanding into a subsequent date as well with other, maybe smaller events and other genres. We're not limited to, you know, just EDM or anything of that nature. We are an entertainment company, and as such, we'd like to bring more to Kitchener than just the EDM experience. One of the, if in your own time you have the, you have the time, you might look up a festival called Bestival, and Bestival touches on multi-genres. It's still something more oriented to, you know, someone less than 40 years old, but nonetheless, it touches on rock. It touches on, obviously, house music, EDM. So, it broadens the experience. But, that said, we would most definitely like to make this an entertainment hub for our company. And as such, expansion is most definitely what we're looking at.
And I'm enthusiastic to hear that because certainly around the council chambers, I always hear from other councillors that they want to continue growing festivals and events and, you know, to make city that, the city of Kitchener that kind of a draw. I appreciate your sensitivity around using the under-40 designation there. I wish you luck, and I hope that this event lives up to the expectations you want and that the residents will be satisfied with the accommodations you've made.
Thank you.
Councillor, Councillor Galloway-Seelock, this is for the motion. Councillor Schneider, do you have questions?
No.
Okay, we'll come back to you then. It looks like it's all the questions that we have. Thank you very much.
Very good.
And you can just take your seat. Councillor Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, I'm prepared to bring forward the noise exemption and the midway for the Ever After Music Festival. I will draw council's attention to the new recommendations with regards to the noise by law for, or the noise exemption for the Ever After Festival on the blue pages, and will look, ask you to omit letter E. All music for the midway will be turned off by 9:00 PM on the Sunday evening. It's come to our attention that there is no music coming from the midway, so that is no longer relevant, which also then draws your attention to the recommendation on the yellow page with regards to the midway, that it says music off at 11:00 PM each of those. That is no longer relevant either because there is no music coming from the midway. So, it's been moved by myself and seconded by councillor Schneider that we proceed forward with the noise exemption for the Ever After Festival. Should I give my comments now?
Sure. You want to, or you can hold them till the end?
I can go quickly now.
Okay.
I just want to say that, from our perspective, because it's been heard that we received the most noise complaints for this specific event last year, it was important for us to make sure we took that extra two weeks in order to make sure that we have something that we, as council members, can in turn come back to the community and say we did the best we could. We think we've got a solid solution here to help mitigate what happened last year. I understand you guys have completely re-engineered the site that I think it's going to generate a lot less noise complaints, but there are a number of pieces in this, in the noise exemption that will assist, from having onsite contact person accessible for our bylaw, to monitoring the complaints and being willing to work with bylaw staff throughout the weekend, and that you're also covering a paid-duty noise officer to specifically focus on this event. I think will really help make this event for not only yourselves successful, but also from a community's perspective, much more successful. And so, I do wish you all the best. I look forward to seeing where this goes. I think with regards to what councillor Marsh was saying, I think it's easier for us to sit here this year and say, let's talk about your end time on Sunday next year, but I think we can do that after this year's festival because if there's minimal complaints generated, then maybe we can keep it the same way it is. And as you explained, this is being televised, just one more point, as you explained in committee, you had a number of things against you in last year's festival, from just the engineering of the site to the weather that was an anomaly that carried things a lot further. And I think that there was a number of cards stacked against you, but I think at the end of the day, we got to continue to make sure we're doing what's best for the residents that live in the area, but want to also create a vibrant Kitchener. And having these types of options for not only the residents of Kitchener, but the residents in the surrounding areas as well is important to the vitality of our city. So, I think we've come up with, you've worked hard, I know staff have worked hard, I know councillor Davy's worked hard, in order to try and come up with the right solution. And I think we have what is the best one we can present forward this year. And so, I thank you for all your cooperation that you've shown to this point.
Thank you. Councillor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I echo a lot of what councillor Galloway-Seelock said. The cost and the time that you've given to remediate the issues that we had last year are significant, and the willingness to help strike a balance between the entertainment of the community and, you know, the residents' need for a little peace and quiet. You've done so much to mitigate what we had last year. We were so lucky to have a facility like Binghamman's that can attract a lot of people to our area and bring some economic development money into our city. So, I just want to thank you for bringing a great event. I hope that this event works very well for you and that you can bring more genres and more things. I think it's great that we have, you know, different musical tastes represented in the city, and you're definitely filling one of them this weekend. So, thank you so much for all the hard work and wish you the best.
Councillor Anadis.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. Quite honestly, I was prepared to support the original recommendation, and the way I'm looking at it right now, I am not going to be supporting what's being recommended here. I think if we had an organization that came in here the first time when they did come in here and not, you know, have all the issues that we had, but then when they came here for the second year and they were committed to doing all kinds of things to mitigate all the solutions, I don't understand why we're slapping this group in the face with these restrictions, to be honest with you. If they were, if they were to disagree, then I can see why we'd give a hard stance. But, the way it's written here, I can't support it. Based on principle, too, I feel like we're discriminating this group. I think it sets a bad precedent as well. I think if we want to promote our community as a festival city, I think we need to do what we can to, you know, to do that, but at the same time, I don't think we should be being, coming in with a heavy hand. And I don't know if members of council were here last summer when we had the head of music from Austin, Texas come here and give out his advice, and one of the, one of the things that he had mentioned was, please, as your municipality, don't start putting in decibel levels. And we just did that. And I cannot support this.
Councillor Anetsky.
When we considered this last year, and we had all the issues that were raised by the various residents through staff and complaints, et cetera, I also, as a councillor, received a handful of complaints from my ward, which is quite a bit away, perhaps on the other side of downtown, away from Binghamman's. And I can understand the concerns that were raised. I see a lot of effort has gone in to try to resolve the various issues, try to put some controls on it, get enforcement in terms of communication being addressed, and I think those are wonderful, wonderful conditions. But, I see that the decibel level has been identified, as I just mentioned a second ago. I'm a musician also, a different genre, but I know that musicians, when they love to play, the louder it sounds, the better it's supposed to be, and I think the volume is part of the package that goes with the entertainment that's provided at those types of venues. So, I don't feel comfortable that that 65 decibel level will be maintained, and that's just the feeling because I just know how musicians love to play. Like I said, I supported this last year. I don't feel comfortable where we're going with this this year. I feel sorry for the residents. I think we're still going to have the problem on noise levels, maybe because some of the other issues may be addressed to some degree, but I'm still concerned on that. So, on that basis, I'm not going to be supporting it.
Councillor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I will be supporting it despite the fact that I had some complaints last time. I appreciate what has been done to mitigate some of those complaints, and I certainly don't agree with councillor Anadis where I'm unhappy when I get four or five complaints. We got over 50 complaints on this across the city, and I'm waiting to see if the mitigation efforts are successful, and if they are, I think that's fantastic. If they're not, I would certainly be looking at the subject again, and believe me, next time, unlike this time, based on complaints, I would be opposing.
Councillor Marsh.
Well, we've got some pretty varied opinions here. I am in support of this motion because I can respect that staff have been working hard with the organizers of the festival to come to resolution about what will be workable. And the delegate came and asked us to support this motion. I mean, if we, if the motion fails, then we're at an impasse again. I mean, if we, if the motion fails, then we're at an impasse again. My understanding when speaking with our staff regarding the decibel level is that this is an internationally recognized decibel level that's acceptable in a residential area. So the decibels will not be, it will not be registered at the point of the speaker, because that would not pass whatsoever. It's going to be registered when a complainant calls in. The bylaw officer will go to their home and show the reading right on the little device to say, okay, what is the decibel level? And if it's under 65, then it's within the limits of this noise exemption. And if it's above, then that is a problem that will be then worked back to the point person. I think that considering all the complaints we had last year and the problems that we had, that this is, this is, it is unfortunately a lot of, a lot of extra work for the organizers, but it's, I think, a necessary one for this year, and see how it goes.
Counselor Davy.
Thank you, I'll be brief. Just wanted to touch upon a couple of things that were mentioned. First and foremost, I do not think this is in any way a slap in the face to the organizers of this event. In fact, I prefer to think of it as a collaborative, cooperative solution based on a problem that we shared last year. And I also want to be clear on what happens if this isn't approved. If this motion, we have, we have some people saying they're not going to support it because they want the residents to suck it up, I guess, so to speak, and we have other people saying they're not going to support it because they don't want the event to go on. The reality is, if you don't support the exemption, it does not mean that the event does not take place. The event will take place anyway, except the difference is, there will not be conditions in like, no cursing, that's audible. The promoters will not have to pay for an onsite noise bylaw officer to ensure that everything is complied with. That's what you'd be voting against. The event itself would still continue, but there would be no conditions. And yes, we could find them, but I would rather work with the promoter than against them.
Before Counselor Galloway-Seelock makes her final comments, I will make mine. I will be supporting the motion that's before us. I, too, want to thank the operators of Beyond Oz and the Ever After Music Fest, the Binghamman's, our bylaw staff, and Counselor Davy for the work that's been done in trying to come up with a compromise that both recognizes the fact that, as a city, we're trying to encourage the development of a music scene and a festival scene, but also recognizes in response to the fact that this one single festival last year brought about a scope of complaints unlike anything we've previously seen. When I became aware of that information last year, my concern was, how do we continue to ensure that we provide opportunities for young people that young people enjoy, which is EDM, which is, you know, louder and so on, while at the same time not jeopardize the many other music festivals that are going to be at Binghamman's or other parts of the city? And this is not unlike a decision that, you know, even the region had to deal with in terms of the airport and some of the issues around the Nolenor flights, because they were causing significant concerns and jeopardizing other types of business into the airport. And so one of the, one of the realities is that we needed to find a collaborative solution, which we were able to do here, that I think is, you know, coupled with the re-engineering of the site, should help to address the vast majority of issues. Are there probably going to still be some complaints? Yes, there will. I mean, but the reality is, that happens at virtually every single festival that we host in the city of Kitchener. There are always some people who are unhappy about them, but not in significant numbers like we saw. And so I think if all of these changes address that, we're going to be well on the path to a long and successful relationship in the community that's going to serve, you know, the Binghamman's and the local business community. From an economic development point of view, it's going to serve our citizens from an overall quality life point of view, because we want to see this. We want to see a country music festival. We want to see a blues festival. We want to see the jazz festival that's up in Waterloo. All of those things are the kinds of things that add to the quality of life of our residents in an urban environment. And that's, that's, you know, what we're trying to create here. Is it a balance? Absolutely. And I think, you know, we've been able to reach that, and so I want to thank everyone for the work that's happened to get us here, and I'm hopeful that, you know, we'll look back on this and it'll be a very successful event when it's completed. So Counselor Galloway-Seelock for the final words?
Yeah, just very briefly. I overheard a member of council suggest that they would have supported the staff recommendation from committee where this new recommendation changes one point and just makes it a little bit clearer for both sides to understand in C and D what some of that language would be. And with regards to what happens, noise complaints, look at Friday and Saturday to kind of be an indicator for Sunday on where, where things would go, and I think it just outlines it better for everybody's understanding, C and D, which used to be the C. But what's even better for the promoters is that the decibel level actually got more lenient from the staff report in committee to what's being presented before us in council, because in committee, it was going to be the sixty five, maximum sixty five decibels from 100 meters from the direct line of sight. Now it's from a residential zone, which we all know is much further than 100 meters. And so it's actually better for the promoter, what we're putting forward here at committee, both for the promoter and I think for the understanding of city and bylaw, when they're going to be enforcing it moving forward. So I think we've taken two weeks to come up with something very strong and positive that we can be proud of and move forward with.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Recorded vote has been called. My screen flipped. All those in favor? All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. We'll now move on to the tenders. Tenders have been moved. Are there any questions? If not, okay. Counselor Fernandez.
So the first question I have is on the first tender about the tree replacement. And in reviewing the price increase of 14%, I'm just a little bit puzzled, even though the response is that it was because of additional mulching, pruning, and restaking. But I'm wondering how doing the tree replacement in the fall, which is often a little bit less, and doing it in the spring affects this 14% increase.
Sorry, Ms. Fletcher?
Through the chair. I can't answer the question specifically of fall versus spring. I do know that we are planting the trees and going back at a later date to make sure, so we're doing additional maintenance to make sure that the tree survives, not just simply doing a planting program.
Okay. And I should have asked this question in an email, so I apologize that I didn't ask this, but are we following the same format that we have with all of our tree replacement by asking the resident if they're willing to have a tree on the boulevard and B, if they're willing to keep that gator bag full, so that it sustains the tree longer and makes sure that it survives better? Are we, are we making sure that there's that agreement with the resident?
Through the chair, I can follow up on any of those specific questions that you have.
Yeah, because I think that's really important. I don't want to see us wasting money on putting trees in where people are just, really don't want them, because I hear that all the time. I don't want a tree on my boulevard, so, thank you.
All right, there appears to be no more questions, but I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Okay, Counselor Marsh.
Yeah, just a question on tender number two. My understanding is that Caron Street is going to be slated for traffic calming next year, so I just wanted to understand if traffic calming considerations will be included in the planning process this year?
Through the mayor. I'd have to get back to you on the details with respect to that.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Fernandez, you had another one?
Yes, on the, on the same one that Counselor Marsh had. Is any of this work related to the, specifically on the Caron Street to Victoria, related to ION construction at all?
Mr. Redmond.
Through the chair, this is reconstruction of Alice Avenue, and it's not related to ION.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the tenders? If not?
Sorry. That's really a long time.
Nope. Do you have another question? Go ahead, Counselor Fernandez.
Okay. So in reviewing the tender for the cargo vans, I certainly think we're seeming to get a really pretty good deal on the cargo vans. But when I looked at the cost for outfitting at $81,600, I had to ask that question, and I did, of Ms. Palmer-Novakovich. I find it very difficult to swallow that it's going to cost us $12,000 to outfit each van. I really, can we have some understanding? Maybe not today, but, and she was kind enough to break it down, but I find $5,500 for a vehicle wrap, $5,000 for shelving in a van, really exorbitant pricing. So I just kindly request that maybe we have a better understanding from our fleet department on why we're paying, I mean, $300 for a GPS sounds reasonable to me, but $5,000 for shelving in a van? So I'm just challenging that part of the tender.
Ms. Fletcher?
We can follow up on the details. I do know for some of the vans, there are regulatory requirements for how they store equipment, some of their tools, and some of the materials that they carry. So there are very specific requirements for securing things within the vans.
Okay. I think, I think it would be really helpful for us to understand what those requirements are, you know, how does that tally up to $5,500? I think that would be, as one of the components.
Is that fairly straightforward information to provide, Ms. Fletcher?
Through the mayor, I'm not sure, but we can certainly follow up.
Okay.
And then I have a question on the open and cut trenching. I was puzzled by the cost savings statement and timely service response. I did email Mr. Tamara Graber. Unfortunately, it doesn't have any solid anticipated cost savings, and Ms. Fletcher did assure me that they will be looking into that, but that there's anticipated to be some cost savings. I'm hoping that once we do a year of this, that we can have a better understanding of what that cost savings is, if possible.
Ms. Fletcher?
I would concur with the council member.
Okay, thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, so the tenders have been moved. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you, Ms. Palmer-Novakovich. We'll now move on to reports of the committees and Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, it's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Dave Schneider that items one through five and number seven on the Community Infrastructure Services Committee be approved.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Financing Corporate Services, Counselor Davy.
Thank you. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Sarah Marsh that items one through four be adopted.
Counselor Fernandez.
One, two, four. I'd like to have number four pulled out, please, and I have some comments and concerns about number four.
Okay. That's fine, Counselor Fernandez, you can make your comments now.
So interestingly enough, this weekend, there was an article in the newspaper that I just happened to see about startups and veterans saying, go slow on startups. And I realized that the Goggle Street is not just startups for technology, but it's also Arts Build Ontario. I didn't support this in the past, and then when I read this, I thought, you know what? This is giving me even more reason. When I read, sorry, Mike Jansen saying, you don't have to go and do a startup, it isn't glamorous as you think, you're probably going to fail. Out of the 1,100 startups, he said, most are going to fail. So I just keep wondering, and I know I've challenged this in the past, I keep wondering if we're supporting something that we have supported in the past, we've put a lot of money towards it, and I think that's, I think that's fine, but we are continually adding money to startups and Accelerator Center, Communitech, and other program, other facilitators of startups. This just gave me another moment to pause and to reconsider the vote for this number four. So I'm going to not support this.
Okay, Counselor Davy.
Thank you. I feel compelled to respond to the most startups will fail. Of course, most startups will fail. That's part of the process. If you talk to any of the major companies in the world, the smartest people that have created the most brilliant companies, the Facebooks, the Paypals, the Apples, they're going to tell you that they've started several companies usually that failed first, before they founded a company that went on to employ thousands, sometimes tens of thousands of people, that have significantly benefited the cities or the cities that, in which they were founded. So are startups going to fail? Yes. Are the majority of startups going to fail? Yes. That is part of the process. But that is not a reason not to invest in startups. And again, I continue to, I continue to support the idea that if you want a resilient economy, it is not a one-trick pony. You don't have a single employer like a Uniroil or a BF Goodrich, where most of the workers in your city are employed, because then if that one business fails, then your entire city is thrown into turmoil. What is much more resilient is hundreds or thousands of much smaller companies that are employing tens or hundreds of people, because if any one of those fail, another one slides right in to step back up, and that's how you create a resilient economy.
Thank you, Counselor Davy. Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I agree with you, Counselor Davy. Failure is never final. It's just a step on the route to success. There's been nothing that has been successful at its first attempt. I think, you know, what we've created here is a great environment that gives companies a good chance at succeeding and working together. So yes, there will be startups that fail, but yes, there will be startups that be successful and grow and grow and grow.
Counselor Anadis.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I think any economist will tell you that small business in general is what drives the economy, and just because the name startup is attached to it, doesn't mean it's not a small business. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
I, seeing nobody else, I will be making my comments. I will be supporting this wholeheartedly, and believe it's something that, quite frankly, all of council should be supporting wholeheartedly, because it's the kind of investment in our community, both in the technology area and in the arts and culture area, that is necessary to see our community to continue to grow and thrive and be successful. If one takes the time to dialogue with those in the tech sector and in the innovation sector, one would hear the kinds of things that we heard from Counselor Davy a few moments ago, that in fact, the most successful entrepreneurs, the most successful companies have had some degree of failure along the way, and through that, they learn things, they challenge themselves to make their innovations better and to create and build better products and better companies. That's how the eco- That's how the ecosystem works. And it's also why organizations like the Accelerator have grown and have been successful for the last ten years. It's exactly why our governor general is coming to town tomorrow to be part of the Accelerator Centre's 10th anniversary celebrations, and why he has spent the vast majority of his time as governor general talking about the importance of innovation for Canada's economic future and prosperity. And this is just another investment in our community that's going to allow us to partake in that, and in fact, continue to lead the country in this regard. It's very easy for us to, you know, sit back and hope that magically somehow, economic development is going to happen, that jobs are going to be created, and that we as a municipality have no role to play in that. That simply is what is false, that's not the way it works, and the reality is, either we rise up and we make the kinds of investments that are necessary to continue to see our community thrive, or we actually start getting behind the curve ball going forward. So with that, I see a couple other speakers, councillor Ionetski?
Yes, thank you very much, I was looking for my notes from the last meeting that we discussed, discussed this item, and I just want to repeat that I did not support it back two weeks ago. I mean, we're giving fifty thousand dollars as a startup money, here's another grant giveaway. Of course, it's going to be all with the Accelerator Group, they are going to be collecting rent, we get nothing for this at all. We have a boiler issue that could go any time, that has been discussed through that. And here we're talking about startups, but really, you know, when you look at the staff report, it's talking about providing space for the arts groups upstairs on the second floor, who hasn't even been touched on. And that was the whole essence of this report going back at the committee level. And when we had the tour of the facility, you know, sure, maybe some groups could be done, but those who are into the theatre and stage and other venues that need more space, the layout does not really suit them at all. So based on that criteria, I'm not going to be supporting it.
Councillor Davy?
Apologies, I'm not, I already made my comments, I just want to read, it reminded me of a quote what was heard earlier, so I'm going to quote Michael Levchin. This is his quote, "The very first company I started failed with a great bang. The second one failed a bit, failed a little bit less, but still failed. The third one, you know, proper failed, but it was kind of okay. I recovered quickly. Number four almost didn't fail. It still didn't really feel great, but it did okay. Number five was PayPal."
Councillor Galloway-Seelock?
I wasn't going to say anything, because I support the recommendation, but I thought it was important to note that the second part of this recommendation was something that I made sure that we brought forward in the committee meeting, which was, for me, is very important with regards to undertaking a communication plan, to make sure the community is aware that this is a short-term space solution, not a long-term space, especially for the arts community, because I think that piece may be forgotten, and that as we look at longer-term solutions, this is one area that we can assist to try and help alleviate some of the stress and burden that we're finding within the arts community, to provide space for them to rehearse and do what they need to do. So I just didn't want that to get lost in the whole grand scheme of things, because I think it's truly an important piece to why I'm willing to invest in this overall project.
Councillor Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say, so that it does not get lost, I support councillor Galloway-Seelock on this point. We're missing here the arts culture angle on this building. We've got a multi-million dollar building there, through lease controls, we'll be able to sell that building if we want to sell it. And this is an empty facility that can now be used by both high-tech companies and by the arts and culture group. It's not perfect for all arts and culture groups, but I think it's a start on our way towards serving that community much better. And certainly, some high-tech companies will fail and some will succeed. I mean, what's new? I question the news value of that story, actually, but at the same time, some of our arts and culture groups will succeed and some will fail, but we're at least giving them the chance to thrive. I'll be supporting it.
Councillor Fernandez?
Sorry, I'm just queuing in, because I forgot to ask a question. I want to understand what conversations were had with the courtyard and that group that have done a tremendous amount of work around space for the arts groups, and they rent it at extremely reasonable rates, and I don't think that question has been asked, and I'd like to understand where the conversations were with them about arts and culture space before we entered into this kind of a discussion.
Mr. Bennett?
Good evening. I haven't had any conversations with courtyard, I don't know if other staff have, but that's something I'll follow up with for you.
I think that's really concerning, because I know that they have done a tremendous amount of work with Neruda, with a number of other different organizations that they have rehearsal space, and now they will be directly competing with us, and that makes me feel very uncomfortable, because this is an entity that's trying to bring forward more arts and culture within our community.
Councillor Marsh?
Maybe I can shed a tiny bit of light on that. My understanding is that Neruda and empty space are neither entering into further agreements with the courtyard. There's a, we cannot presume to know all the ins and outs of different spaces. I can say, though, that the space that we are offering arts and culture groups is far more varied in terms of different spaces, different closed-door offices. We, it's a different space altogether, it's not in direct competition, in my view.
Thank you. Councillor Etherington?
Yeah, I just wanted to say through you, Mr. Mayor, that courtyard is in my ward, and I'm aware of what councillor Fernandez is getting at, but we really do need more information on that subject. I know that staff and councillors are meeting in the next week or so to try and get more information on that subject, and based on what I know, I'm satisfied with the fact that we're going ahead with the Gokel Street building, and I don't think we'll be competing with the courtyard.
Okay, councillor Fernandez?
Sorry, then, that's new information, and I think as a point of order, then maybe what we should be doing is if there's conversations happening with the people from the courtyard, maybe we should be deferring this item until we understand fulsome the discussions that are going to be had with the courtyard, and what's happening with their space as opposed to the space that we're going to be spending money on. So I'd like to put a deferral on the table for that item number four.
Until when?
Until the next council meeting.
Okay, yeah. Councillor Marsh?
Do, can I just ask the councillor who's putting forward this deferral question? Do you have information about the courtyard that they feel that they are being competed against by the city?
Councillor Fernandez?
Nothing that nobody else had, I believe the email went out to all of council from John McDonald.
That was, that was over a month ago regarding a totally different matter?
No, he sent an email out, I know that councillor Etherington got it as well.
Okay, I, okay, thank you. Just wanted to ask if you had additional information beyond what's been shared.
Councillor Etherington?
I think councillor Fernandez should keep busy in her own ward, that's what I think.
Okay, we're going to deal with the motion to defer, because it has been moved and seconded. I won't be supporting the deferral. I think we need to move on with this, and all the work has been done, there's no reason to defer it. All those in favor of the deferral? All those opposed? Deferral fails? All those in favor of the, actually, recorded vote on the original motion? All those in favor? All those opposed? And the motion carries. Planning and strategic initiatives. Councillor Ionitis? Oh, sorry? Thank you. The remainder of F and CS, all those in favor? Opposed, that too is carried. And now councillor Ionitis? If you can click in, thank you.
It's been moved by myself and seconded by councillor Schneider, that the part, your planning and strategic initiative committee recommends the following, one, dealing with parts, the central plan, and two, dealing with petroleum gas pumps, the motion.
Okay, thank you. Sorry? Okay, councillor Davy? Okay, we'll deal with item number one, any comments? Not all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried unanimously. Number two. Councillor Fernandez?
Yeah, although I wasn't here for this portion, I did view it online, and I noticed that there was some interesting conversation and discussion around it. I know that Robert Shirkey has done a lot of work around this, and I was pleased to see that it passed at committee, and hope it does again today.
Okay, recorded vote has been called? Number two, a recorded vote has been called? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. That takes us through that unfinished business. New business, I had a motion, councillor Marsh, you indicated you're willing to bring that in for me. Do you want to turn your mic on and bring it in, please?
Sure thing. So this is regarding the Fort McMurray support. So whereas approximately eighty thousand residents were displaced in Fort McMurray, Alberta, as a result of the wildfire which covered two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand hectares, and whereas the fire destroyed over two-thousand-four-hundred homes and has been identified as the largest insurance event, in quotes, in Canadian history, estimated at up to nine billion dollars in value, and whereas the federal government has identified that they will match individual donations made to the Canadian Red Cross to assist with their efforts in Fort McMurray, therefore be it resolved that five thousand dollars be donated to the Canadian Red Cross in support of disaster relief for the thousands of people affected by the wildfire in Fort McMurray.
Okay, councillor Galloway-Seelock, you're seconding it? Okay, councillor Ionitis?
I'll be supporting the recommendation, but I want to see an additional five thousand added, so I want to add that as an amendment.
Okay, is there a second for that amendment? Okay, seconded, that's fine. Councillor Ionetski?
Oh yeah, I was going to make that motion, but I was beaten to the punch here, but anyways, I think there was a tragic scenario that unfolded back in Alberta back last week, and feel very much sorry for all those people who've been displaced, and they did a great job in terms of evacuating the entire city, and now they've got a big challenge of them to restore the homes, and I think the money of ten thousand would, and it's, although it's a small little drop in the bucket, will help them to move forward.
Councillor Fernandez?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you're with your connection to FCM, have they identified or been in communication with the government of Alberta with regards to assistance outside of financial assistance as people go back to their homes for help with processing, rebuilding? Have we got any understanding about that as yet?
FCM continues to dialogue regularly with, primarily been dealing actually with the Mayor Don Iverson from Edmonton as the point of contact, because the city of Fort McMurray has been conducting their council meetings at City of Edmonton City Hall in the interim until the situation is resolved. They've also been communicating with the federal government and other municipalities. At this point, Alberta has not formally through the, as I understand it, Alberta has not formally requested any assistance from other provinces, other than the forestry firefighters that were requested early on. They, there were offers from fire departments, including our own, to provide, to send firefighters in if that was necessary, but that request never came through the emergency operations protocols that exist between the provinces and the federal government. As I understand it, from a rebuilding point of view, the province is very much looking at this as an opportunity to re-employ people in Alberta who are unemployed right now because of the realities of the oil industry, and that's obviously their first focus at this point in time.
We'll, we would be apprised if there is a, there is a need for assistance, because I know that myself and a number of people I'm connected with are very ready, willing, and able to go and help in any way possible.
Sure, and if that information becomes available, it'll be certainly communicated to all members of council.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Galloway-Seelock, you have some information on that?
Further on that point, I, it's my understanding that there currently is employment opportunities outside of the province, that I believe you can go to the federal government's website, and they are looking to hire people who have background in history in restoration and/or construction, so you can check out their website for further information.
Thank you for that additional information. Councillor Davy?
Thank you, I'm of course going to support this initiative, but ten thousand dollars is still a bit of a significant sum, and I can't recall how we typically deal with these, what budget it comes from, it's like, what's the funding source is?
So our history of this, I'll answer the first part, and I'll look to Mr. Chapman for the second part. Our history for many of the global disasters in the past has been five thousand dollar donations. We did contribute ten thousand dollars to Syrian relief when those dollars were being collected late last year, but in most other instances, it's been five thousand, based on the information that Mr. Goodie obtained for me from previous minutes. Mr. Chapman, on where it comes from?
Through the mayor, there is no budget for this cost, so it represents an over expenditure and general expense, so all things being equal, this would be a cost that would flow through as a deficit to tax stabilization at the end of the year.
And just for your information, councillor Davy, the region has committed twenty-five thousand, Waterloo was, did five thousand, Cambridge was dealing with five thousand tonight, and I think one of the townships did a thousand or something, maybe the others, I can't, I'm not sure about that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Councillor Marsh?
I'm just wanting to speak in support of what councillor Davy was just referring to, I mean, absolutely, I want to support this a hundred percent, it's, the original motion is the one I agreed to put forward on behalf of Mayor Verbanovic. I do, though, think that since it is being matched by the federal government, it already, we, by putting in five thousand, we are contributing essentially ten thousand dollars towards Fort McMurray, no?
No, sorry, just on that point, the federal government only matches personal donations, not, not those from corporations or other government entities.
Let's scratch that part from the motion.
Okay. Well, no, they're still doing it, but they're not matching our portion.
Right, okay, regardless, I do feel that as much as this is an extremely worthy cause, and I would encourage those community members who have means to do so, to donate generously, I do think that it would be prudent for us to be cautious going forward with the tax with the taxpayer dollars. Uh, and I think that five thousand dollars is the appropriate amount.
Counselor Ionitis.
I'll just want to, thanks for that clarification from the mayor. I think that raises a good point, which is, which is why it's important that I think we do, um, add additional funds to, to this cause. I, I mean, this is one that's really close to home. And I know this will probably be a significant topic that's, that we're going to be dealing with in two weeks now at, at FCM. So I, I think it's rather appropriate that we, um, provide that assistance. And I know it is a drop in the bucket, and I know others are really wanted to support further. So I think it's just a, it's just a gesture.
Okay, any other comments? The, um, okay, we'll then deal with the, uh, the amended motion for the ten thousand dollar amount first. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Uh, and the motion as amendment, as amended, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried unanimously. Uh, regional council update, sorry, Counselor Fernandez, you had another item of new business?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to update everybody quickly about the municipal summit, uh, OMB municipal summit that happened this weekend. We had an outstanding attendance, we represented close to eighty municipalities. Um, we had some expert panelists, we had Build, Build Ontario experts, we had OMB chairs, uh, we had planning lawyers, and we had former mayors. And I think it was, a lot was discussed. Uh, we have a number of, we have a lot of work to do now compiling all of the notes. And our hope is to bring a report forward, um, to AMO and as well as that report would be circulated to all municipalities that both have participated and who show interest in receiving that report. So I hope to bring that forward sometime in August.
Okay, thank you very much for that information. And, uh, as I think I mentioned, uh, to, to council and mentioned last time as well, uh, it's my understanding that the, the regional, uh, chairs have also, uh, and, and AMO have commissioned, um, a study on the issue of OMB reform. And have, are getting, uh, work done, soliciting best practices from a variety of jurisdictions um, across the, the country and elsewhere for this kind of work. And that, uh, report is going to be going to the AMO board, as I understand it, to help formulate, uh, part of their thinking on this issue and dealing with the provincial government as well. Um, regional council update, just one item to bring to everyone's attention. Uh, this Thursday, from four to eight PM at Regional Headquarters is the public open house for the King and Victoria Transit Hub. Uh, it's something that, uh, members of council may, uh, may want to, uh, attend, particularly the downtown councillors, but all council. Because it certainly will, uh, play an important role in that key intersection in our, uh, in our community. So just wanted folks to be aware of that. Uh, any questions and answers? Not, we'll, bylaws, first reading, it's been moved by Counselor Janetski, seconded by Counselor Ionitis, that lead be given the mover and seconded to introduce the bylaws list down the agenda, and that the same be taken as read, a first time instead refer to the committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Um, and it's been moved by Counselor Etherington, that council resolve itself into the committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried, Counselor Etherington.
Yeah, I would, I need a mover for the second reading of the bylaws. Counselor Janetski. Moved that, uh, those in, those in favor? Those against? None against?
Counselor Etherington, just before you continue, there is a delegation in the audience, I just want to make sure. Are you here for any item on the agenda? Are you just here watching? No, not yet, okay, that's coming up. Okay, thank you. Uh, back to you, Counselor Etherington. And I'll move the sign variances for you, the sign and fence variances.
That's number two, all in favor? Any against? Number three, moved by Counselor Ionitis, all in favor? Any against? And the item, uh, that's number three still. Item number four, the property on Young Street, the Mayfair property, that's what the people are here to, uh... Did you want to speak on that?
I tell you, if you want to hear what's going to be discussed first, then, um, maybe we would like to make some comments on the bylaws.
Is that possible, Mr. Mayor?
So, so perhaps I'd invite you to come forward to the podium, and if you want to say anything now, because that's the normal procedure, so we hear from delegations, um, and then, and then deal with the item. You can just identify yourselves for the clerk and, um, and then just make any comments you want to make.
I'm Ken Lippert, and my wife Helen Lippert. We're in... Pardon?
Explain.
Ken's great uncle built the Mayfair, and as you may remember, we were, we worked with members of the family and with the city to try and get it designated. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, and, uh, it's no longer there. But we are interested to find out what happens with the, uh, the property now.
What concerns us is that, uh, when the demolition was about to be done or had been done, Mr. Nymer said that he was going to have that area grassed within hours, few days or a week or something. This is one year later as of May seventeenth, the day of the demolition, a year ago. And now the city is saying that they're going to pay the buck to look after that property because Nymer isn't going to do it. It sounds to me like he's been horsing around forever. And, uh, we are taxpayers and we keep shelling out the money. Is this logical to any of you?
Is that the end of your presentations?
I guess for now, do we get to?
No, no, it's not, you don't get to sort of back and forth, so you can, you get five minutes now to make-
We don't get to make any comments after the presentation, I mean, we, we don't even know so, so far other than you printed out the five-page document. And the little bit that we saw on television indicated the city of Kitchener was going to put out probably seventy thousand dollars to look after that site.
So that's the same report that council's considering tonight, if that's what you printed out?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Okay, well, there's several people ahead of you, Counselor Fernandez. Um, okay, so is, is that all?
That's all.
Okay, let's see if we have questions for you, Counselor Ionitis, is your question of the delegation? Okay, I'll come back to you, Counselor Davey, staff, Counselor Fernandez of the delegation?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for coming in on, on short notice. So I guess I need to understand from you that what your thought, I mean, your last statement would indicate to me that you think it's foolhardy to spend this money after Mr. Nymer had committed to grassing the area when the demolition was complete. So my understanding that is your feeling about, I, I think, can you see on the screen what the plan is?
Can't make out the printing.
No, but can you see the diagram of what is, what is anticipated to be put there?
Um, I think we probably have a photo copy of it.
The printing's not great on it either. Anyway.
So yeah, that's my question to you, is that, is that your thoughts? That, that this is not a, that you wouldn't support this as a taxpayer and as a former, uh, as a grandchild to the former owners?
For me, the objection is, why is the city likely to pay for this? Why isn't Mr. Nymer paying for it if he isn't, he's supposed to do something with that property? The city of Kitchener, us, the taxpayers, have put in huge amounts of money into that building over the years. And here we dump another X number of thousands of dollars into it? Into the property on his behalf?
So that, and that's good, I think that's important for us to hear your comments. If you had, uh, uh, the ability to make a suggestion, what would your suggestion be for that site?
If you're going to do, if this is going to be done, let him pay for it.
Or at least contribute towards it.
Okay, great, thank you very much for coming in and giving us your opinion, it's very important.
Thank you.
Counselor Marsh, do you have questions of the delegation? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Ken and Helen, for coming in. And I appreciate your, you know, continuing in, interest in this, uh, property. So I just want to ask, uh, are, um, to what extent, uh, are you aware that the, this, this plan is not a permanent plan? This is just a two-year maximum or so plan, like approximately one to two-year plan?
Yes, we're aware of that.
Yeah, and so then the, uh, the, the property owner at the ti, at, between now and then will be developing a plan for the next step after that.
Like he's been doing for the past year. Okay.
Right, is so, uh, so yeah, so there are, there, anyway, I, um, we're going to be able to ask questions of staff and you'll be able to see some of the additional information that comes forward. But I really appreciate that you're here tonight, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Janetski, do you have questions of the delegation?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Ken and Helen, for coming in. And I know you've been following this right from day one, uh, when this whole, uh, issue has unfolded back over a year ago. The report that you have before you, did you see that there are four options?
Yes, I, I read the whole thing, Ken, didn't have time-
Okay, I, I didn't know which one you had, because nothing was mentioned about options. And I know you don't want the, the recommended option, option number three is where they're talking about spending sixty to seventy thousand dollars. So, oh, you're, you're aware of the other three. You, you see, I, I gather where you're coming with your comments is probably something similar to option two, that the responsibility should be the current owner of the property, Bernie Nymer, he should be taking care of it. Is that, that's what you're coming from, right?
Yes.
Okay, but you see the comments that were identified by staff, uh, by doing, uh, just putting in grass to make it look, you know, uh, fairly respectable and pretty, uh, may not hold up to public scrutiny in terms of, you know, usage and stuff like that. Are, do you have any comments on that? Or are you saying, are you thinking that basically what is an option three that is being recommended in that site plan or the drawing that you have above you is what Bernie Nymer should be paying? I'm trying to figure out where you're coming from, whether option two, just grass it and let him pay for it and do the minimal? Or have him pay for option three?
Well, according to your report, the, your, your own people have said that the grass is not going to last. So probably doing that is not logical. But we just feel that because of the whole situation, that Mr. Nymer should be contributing at least something towards the, uh, I mean, he said originally he was going to take care of it and landscape it, and it was going to be lovely until such time as he built. Now suddenly, he's scot-free and the city's paying for it.
Okay, I, I appreciate your comments, I don't have any further questions, but I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, any other questions of the delegation? Um, I, I just have, I have one. And, uh, thank you both for coming in, um, this evening, and I understand, uh, your, your concern. I guess the one question I would have for you is, um, you know, knowing that we're, we're trying to, um, you know, invest in the downtown and add to its vibrancy and so on. Um, if the choice was to either see the property fenced in or, or boarded up for the next two years, um, because the property owner didn't want to take on the liability as referenced in, in number two, um, or going with option three, which was sort of the middle-of-the-road option of the expense ones, um, do you, do you have any thoughts on, on that? They, do you think it makes?
Are there other properties within the city of Kitchener that buildings have been demolished? The land has been flattened, and they're just left there as a green space?
Yes, there, there are actually, there's, uh, the property at the corner of, uh, Scott and Weaver Street that's been fenced off and basically a mound of dirt for many months. Um, there's, uh, a couple in the downtown that, you know, regularly we get some complaints about. Um, there's, uh, I mean, those are the ones that come to mind right away.
But there aren't any that don't have a fence around that are flattened off and green-spaced?
That are flattened off and are green-
Well, they're, yeah, they, they demolished a building, they filled in the hole, they put down whatever, two feet tops-
I'd be hard, I'd be hard-pressed to think of one, I mean, there, there are, there are some, for example, there's the old gas station site at King in Ottawa, but that one continues, it's blocked off with concrete blocks. Um, and it's being treated for contamination.
Do all, do all of you think that it is fine that Nymer, Mr. Nymer, is not forced to do something with it, he was the one that wanted it demolished?
Okay, so I, I respect your opinion and that's fine. So I don't believe there's any more questions, uh, for you at this point. So thank you very much, if you want to take your seat and, and you can listen to the questions of, that council has of staff and of, and the debate that goes on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both for coming in. Counselor Etherington, I'll now pass it back over to you, because we're in committee of the whole. And you've got Councillors Ionitis, Davey, and Marsh, and Janetski on the list.
And I want, I had some questions after everyone else's had their question. Sorry, the first one was-
Ionitis.
Ionitis.
Yes, thank you. Uh, my questions are, I've heard the timeframe, one to two years, is, is that a hard deadline for them? Or is, or is, do we have some teeth with that?
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Mr. Bloom.
Uh, through the chair, uh, Mr. Nymer continues to work on redevelopment of, uh, options. Uh, at this point, he said, he has nothing, uh, concrete, so this summer there will certainly be no activity, uh, on the site. And knowing the scale and complexity of a site like this, typically you're looking at sixteen to twenty-four months in terms of permitting and, and design work. So, uh, uh, the, the statements he's made to us is, certainly the space will sit vacant this summer and likely next summer, after that, it's really dependent on his ability to, uh, to, to find a redevelopment opportunity.
Okay. Um, my other question is, uh, with the underst, was, involves Andron's, uh, center block development. And they, are they not building a plaza there, a park in the center there? And do we know when that timeframe is?
Ms. McDonald? Oh, sorry, I've got too many people on.
Uh, yes, uh, I may advise with respect to the center block development, that is one of the proposals for the phasing. I know that that's still, still being discussed. Uh, the timing is not imminent, it would definitely be as part of phase two if it was going forward.
Okay. Um, as far as the liability, we, we take full respons, full liability on the property?
I will take that question as well. The intent would be, in this particular case, that we enter into an agreement to allow us to use the land. And anytime the city uses somebody else's land for its purposes, we typically will indemnify the property owner and provide our own insurance coverage to deal with that site.
Okay, and my last question is, you know, we've had a- Okay, and my last question is, you know, we've had a site right across from City Hall, vacant there, fenced off for a long time. Why hasn't we, why haven't we looked at that property first? Because in my opinion, that's much more strategic position, property to, to do something like this.
Through the chair, from a technical level, I, I wouldn't support proceeding with a park space on that property predominantly for safety reasons. It's between two buildings, and the, the ground slopes down to the back lane, so it's not highly visible from the road, and I would be more fearful for septic concerns that would emanate from that site, whereas this site being on a corner is much more visible into the site.
Counselor Ionitis, I would just add that that property is actually two different property owners, and there's a, and there's a, there's a long history on.
I understand what the history is there, but I'm not satisfied with what we have here right now.
That's fine, I'm just.
So, when the time's appropriate, I, I want, I want to put forward a deferral motion, because I, I, I want to see, I personally, I'll give my comments afterwards, but I, I want to, I'm gonna put that forward.
You have Counselor Davy next. Counselor Davy?
Thank you. So, I, I have a few concerns on the process. First question is, I think, well, to be fair, I think Mr. Nymer's getting a bit of a rough ride here, because my first question is, if we just ultimately decided that he go through and complete the grading, including grass, installation of grass, or another suitable ground treatment as written, he would do that, is that correct?
Through the chair, I shouldn't really speak for him, but he has, there's two primary concerns that he has with the grass, now that he's, with the grass option, now that he's had time to understand it. One is just the, the pure ability to grow it. As it's sort of mentioned in the report, our horticultural staff believe it's, it's very difficult to, to put grass down and actually have it successfully grow in that environment. But more so, Mr. Nymer, I believe, is worried about liability as soon as you grass the site, you know, fenced or not fenced, it will invite activity, which he becomes liable for anything that happens on it. So I think those are his two primary reasons why he's reluctant to proceed at this time.
Okay, but to be clear, and like not being argumentative, but it says, as a condition of the demolition permit, the property owner is required to complete, finish grading, including installation of grass, or another suitable ground treatment. So presumably, we could force him to do that part at least, correct?
Through the chair, yes, it's a condition of demolition control. There are no teeth left in the process to force him to do it. It would be, but it's, it's part of, it's a condition of the process, and if he did it, it would be obviously on good faith to complete the conditions that were set out in the, in the demolition control. But as a mechanism, we don't necessarily have a, a mechanism to, to make him do it at this moment.
Okay, well, we'll leave that for a second, but supposing he did go through and sod it, or whatever other sort of ground covering you possibly use, my immediate concern is option number one, where it says the city could install wood fencing hoarding along the perimeter of the site. Why would the city need, if, if Mr. Nymer's worried about liability, wouldn't it be in his best interest to build his own fence? Why would we pay for it?
Through the, through the chair, two, two responses to that. So number one, the, the site as is, meets our property standards, so he hasn't ever indicated an inclination to put a wood fence up. He would, he would maintain the fence as is. It was just suggested as an, as an option to address the eyesore issue, that if we wanted to put a wood fence and potentially look at either murals or some other works, simply to address the aesthetic issue, but it's not, it's not something that Mr. Nymer was looking at.
So in other words, he, he's, he's totally in the clear then, if he heaps up the, I guess, the wire cage fence?
Through the chair, as per our property standards bylaw, yes.
Okay.
Counselors, Galway Seelock?
Just point a clarification on the no teeth to enforce. If it was a condition on a demolition permit, could we not do the work ourselves and put it back on his property taxes? Because it's a condition of demolition.
I would have to suggest to you that we don't have the ability to put it on the taxes. We would just have to work with the property owner to see if they would comply.
So our demolition control, when we put conditions on a demolition control, we have absolutely no way of holding anybody to it, so it's useless.
I don't believe we do.
Thank you, Counselor Galway Seelock, that's, was my concern as well. We'll have to leave that for the moment. So my next question is, I, I don't quite, knowing how difficult it is to get things through committee into council for projects that we're interested in, I guess I don't fundamentally understand how we start at a property owner needing to sod or finish grading, to a fully fleshed-out plan costing sixty to seventy thousand dollars without any input or direction from council or committee. Could someone please clarify that for me?
Through the chair, ultimately, what we've been hearing from members of the public is, is a concern over the, the visual impact of the site. So we simply wanted to present a variety of options that council can look at. We, we sharpened the pen on a couple of these to make sure we could provide you with viable pricing for each of the four options that we were looking at, and that's simply a, a matter of giving council options to consider and, and taking direction from there.
Okay, the, sorry, I'll try and wrap up. Is there, until now too, I haven't heard, and I'm looking for direction, I haven't heard an actual need for this specific space. I get the pop-up area, but aside from festivals and events, our own city, Carl's Air Square, oftentimes is sparsely populated. There's plenty of space there for people to sit, so is there, is there an absolute desire or need for the space to be beautified and programmed at this time? And would it not draw away from our own square?
Through the chair, we were simply responding to the types of comments we've been receiving from the public, that it, it wasn't so much just to see the site prettied up and beautified, but most of the comments would, were hoping that there would be opportunities for some type of public use on that site, hence why two of the options refer to potential public uses. In terms of, you know, would it detract from uses at Civic Square, I could, I, I suggest that this would probably be well-used at, at lunch hours, just for people who work downtown, taking their lunch, for example. And I think most, most of the larger festivals would likely try to incorporate it into their events, so you're probably right, it may take some away, but I don't think it would take too much away from what we do on Carl's Air Square.
Okay, I will, and probably out of time, but it's not kept, but I will have a comment and preference on direction after Counselor Ionitis brings forward his deferral.
Okay, Counselor Etherington, you've got Councillors Marsh, Yenetski, Schneider, and Fernandez.
And then me. Counselor Marsh, questions?
All right, thank you, Chair Etherington. So, a question, a couple of questions of staff. So, do we know any details about what has been the holdup on the part of the property owner in terms of completing the demolition control requirements?
Through the chair, I think, as I mentioned, his, his two main reluctance is, number one is the ability to actually grow grass. He would probably be the first to suggest that while he, he made that promise, he's not a turf expert, and now that he understands the difficulties in, in growing grass in that environment, he, you know, he may have considered suggesting different options back then, but again, I shouldn't, shouldn't speak for the man who's not here. And then his second concern is, is the liability. If, if the site invites activity, he as the property owner becomes liable for any injuries or things that happen on that site.
Okay. Question for Legal. I want to know, in the future, would there be a way for us to add provisions to the demolition control permits to, to requi, to be able to add teeth to the, to the requirements?
We'd have to look at the legislation. Off the top of my head, I don't believe there's anything in there that would allow us to do that, but it's something we'd be prepared to look at if that's wish of council.
And so can, can staff refresh our memories about how this, this property ended up being demolished? Was it not the, the chief building officials' requirement that we demolished the site, and rather than the property owner's initiation?
Well, the building was declared unsafe by the building department, and as, as a result, the property owner took the building down.
Right, and so it wasn't that the property owner came to us and said, you know, I really, just for fun, I want to demolish this building and put something different up, so?
That's correct, it was city-initiated because the building was unsafe.
Okay. Question for Mr. Bloom. So, should this recommendation of staff go forward, what, what would you, can you give us a couple examples of some of the programming that you and your staff have been considering?
Through the chair, one of the options for the site, as is shown, the, the downtown BIA, as part of the Chris Kindle Market, built a series of huts or kiosks, which essentially, they used at the Chris Kindle Market as market vendor stalls. They've, they've suggested that if this site were to be developed for some type of public use, they're open to us making use of those huts. So those five kiosks that you see there are the five that are currently being stored on site. So, most of our festivals do have some type of vendor area, whether that's a marketplace for art vendors or, or what have you, so those could be used for, for those events. You know, we would look at, we run a variety of city-run markets throughout the summer, and we would look at using the space for those markets. We also do live music programming throughout the downtown all summer long at various locations, and we would likely include that as one of the locations that we would provide live music, likely over lunch hour during the week.
So what would be the benefit of doing it here versus at Carl's Air Square? What, what would this add for, for your programming?
Through the chair, it's, it's a, simply another opportunity for people to engage in, in public activity. It's, Carl's Air Square is fairly large, and this, this site is a little bit more intimate, so it's a bit of a different context. But more importantly, very difficult for us to use the kiosks on Civic Square because they are so large and they require a forklift to be moved, so really one of the big advantages would be the ability to use the, the kiosks on this site as opposed to Carl's Air Square.
So, BIA member businesses that have been affected, for example, by LRT construction, have, have they shown an interest in being able to use the kiosks to be able to promote their businesses?
Through the chair, they have through some of the major festivals that are being planned. So for example, if on, on Canada Day, more than likely the, if this, if this was available at that time, the BIA would more than likely look to a number of its own businesses to see if they wanted to, to make use of one of the kiosks on Canada Day when the festival is on.
Okay, what would be the impact of deferring this motion today?
Through the chair, I guess my main, my main question back to, to council would be, just to understand what they would like us to evaluate by deferring it. Obviously, the main dry, drawback of deferring it is, event season is around, is just around the corner, so obviously the longer it takes us, should you, should you want to proceed with this option, it would just decreases the amount of time that we can program it in the summer. But largely, I think we'd be more interested in understanding what issues that councillors would like us to reevaluate.
I don't know if the timer's been on for me. I feel like I've, but I have one more question, just end with one question. So, Mr. Bloom, could you provide for us, for option three, a bit more of a cost breakdown so that it can help council and anybody watching this meeting to understand a bit better what, what the costs entail?
Through the chair, so really as part of option three, what we wanted to provide was what we believe is the most cost-effective solution, given that we're in an urban environment in downtown Kitchener. So, you know, the majority of the costs, so probably half to two-thirds, is really for the surface material, which in this case, we've suggested asphalt is the most cost-effective. We looked at all sorts of other options, obviously grass we, we ruled out. Other materials like gravel, you know, aren't overly suitable to an urban environment. We've looked at wood chips. Wood chips work great in a playground, not so great in an urban environment. We have so many people with, you know, likely food and drink waste, broken glass, certain materials that you just, you, you don't want, you know, kids love to play in wood chips, and, and I don't know that you would want them playing in, in an urban context with the amount of people that use it on a regular basis. So ultimately, when we looked at all of the, the different types of materials, asphalt became the, the most appropriate and least expensive, and that is the, the largest chunk of, of the cost. It, it is slightly more expensive here than in normal places, largely because of the urban context of, of trying to pave a road. There's just a, a larger cost for, for road closures, flagging, et cetera, that we would incur here than we would on a regular site.
Counselor Marsh, I think your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Yenetski?
Yes.
Questions?
Yeah, I, I have lots of comments which I'll reserve, but I have a question for staff to try to understand, was written in the report, and what you said, Mr. Bloom, in terms of a comment regarding option one, and that in the report it says, the site remains in eyesore, it cannot be used by the public, you've gotten complaints, and I can understand that, I appreciate that. But in the same breath, you said it meets property standards. How does it meet property standards if we've got an eyesore? And we've got an issue here.
Through the chair, simply put, our, the, the minimum standard required by our property standards bylaw is that the site be secured, that it not have the presence of weeds, and that the, the filler debris doesn't come onto city property during rainstorms. So it's really, in terms of the property standards bylaw, that's, that's all that's expected. I guess what's, perhaps what we're alluding to is that what, what the public would, would like to see with the site may be a different level of standard than what our property standards, and allows us to enforce.
So what you're basically saying is what you see there, this eyesore, meets property standards?
Through the chair, in, in the minds of many of members of the public who have voiced the concerns, yes. It's everybody's opinion as to whether that's an eyesore or not, but through some of the comments we've received, that's the, the feedback we get.
Who's next?
Counselor Schneider, and then Fernandez.
Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Chair Etherington. Mr. Nymer did say that he would grass and landscape this space over, so I'm just wondering, would it be reasonable to ask him to contribute the cost of what it would have cost to grass and landscape it to the cost of this project?
Through the chair, it's, it's noted in the report that two of the concessions that Mr. Nymer would offer, one is, is the site would be ours to use for free, there would be no cost to us using the site, but more importantly, he would assume the cost of removing all of the asphalt after the fact, which is probably more costly than putting grass in, in the first place. So that would essentially be his contribution. Otherwise, you know, when it was time for redevelopment, it would be our obligation to remove the, the surface materials at our expense, so he's, he's offered to, to assume that cost.
Okay, I just, you know, it would be nice if, if we could have discussions with him to see if there could be a small gesture of, of contribution to this, because it is keeping the land usable and in good shape until such time that he can redevelop it. Thank you.
Counselor Fernandez?
Okay, so, is his liability any different than the site that sits off on King Street that is about directly opposite Bieber Boutique, or maybe a bit of a diagonal that's on King Street? It's a little bit past Gashow Automotive. So there's, there's been a demolition there of some kind of building, and it's, it's empty, it's a vacant lot. So the owner of that property, if somebody was hurt on that property, is his liability any different than that site?
I'm sorry, Counselor Fernandez, I can't think of the site you're talking about, but the reality is, if, if people have property in the downtown, and the public is welcomed on it, or just automatically goes on it, and they're hurt, they may have recourse against the property owner. So, they may be in exactly the same situation. So they may be in exactly the same situation. Mr. Nymer is just being very clear, he does not wish to be subject to any liability and the safest way to do that is to fence it off. So anybody else, if they were concerned, that would be their recourse as well as to fence off the property.
Okay, that's the answer I was expecting from you, thank you. How much time have we spent on this report and putting together this plan? Can we have an understanding of how many hours in investigation discussions?
Through the chair, hard to put it in exact, we didn't exactly track every hour. Our Parks Department spent a number of hours putting together what they believe is a reasonable concept, and then our Engineering Department spent some time providing us with possible costing. And then my staff, who sort of facilitated the process, would have spent a few hours on it. So, really hard to give you an exact number, but that gives you a sort of a general scope of...
Ten, fifteen hours?
I would say with all staff included, probably closer to 20 to 30.
Okay, thank you. You're talking about using this space for markets and special events and Counselor Iainis raised a good point on the site that's across the street from City Hall. I mean, you said that that was a dangerous site because of Septed, but I think there's things that we could do to alleviate that. Are we not trying to animate the Civic Square that we have, as well as the Duke Street area, as well as all the small greens we already have? Are we not trying to animate those already? So why would we add an additional space?
Through the chair, yes, we animate a number of spaces downtown throughout the year. This was really, I think, an opportunity or a response to the complaints we've heard that if people wanted this to be a publicly usable space, to make it a successful space, adding elements that could lend to programming would be beneficial. Could you just put a basic surface material down and leave it that way? You could. I think what we are suggesting by adding a little bit of programming just hopefully adds a little bit more life to this space in particular, and that was really the notion of it that...
But we could be doing that to any empty vacant space in the city, right? I mean, just because this one happens to be across from City Hall, there's many other spaces that we could be using the same kind of funding, doing the same, animating across from the market. So, you know, I guess my question is, why are we looking at this specific one? Is it just because it's across from City Hall and so people find it an ISO? There's many ISOs throughout the city that we could be animating, we could be spending this money on. Why have we, it puzzles me as to why we're looking at this one when there are many other ones. My next question is, you have three phases on a project that is supposed to be only temporary. That would indicate to me that this is longer, considered a longer-term solution, otherwise you wouldn't be doing it in phases.
Through the chair, at this point, we really only have any expectation of looking at phase one. It sort of describes in the report why phase two needs to sort of maintain as a swell and phase three really isn't an ideally accessible space. Phase two and phase three would only be in the event that if, say, you know, four or five years from now, we're still looking at this space as is and we don't have a redevelopment opportunity, you know, that there may be options to look at doing something differently with phase two or phase three, but that's, it's really just, you know, suggesting that not much is doable on phase two, a little bit on phase three over the sort of life of this. But as I said, we have no clarity on the length of the time of the space. It could be one or two years or it could be longer, it's really subject to Mr. Nymer's ability to bring a redevelopment proposal forward.
He's getting such a deal.
Counselor Fernandez, your time is up, I'm sorry. Next on the line is Counselor Davey, is it questions of staff, counsel comment? We're not at comments yet. Galway Selach, counsel.
That's me. I have a couple of questions. First of all, gravel versus asphalt? Why, is gravel not cheaper than asphalt?
Through the chair, you're correct. Gravel's a bit of a risk in an urban environment, largely people potentially throwing it at buildings that have glass is always a common concern in any downtown. And you also, you do deal, it's a little less of the same issues that you deal with wood chips, but you do have a maintenance issue with, you know, because the site potentially would be used for food and beverage, you will get spills, you will get those types of materials in the gravel and it'll become a maintenance issue over time. But it's more so typically, we try to avoid any type of projectile material in an urban environment with things that can happen at three o'clock in the morning that are out of our control.
And then you've got coloring asphalt and making designs with white reflective painted asphalt design. Does that increase the cost?
Very minimally, and I mean, certainly, our expectation is that we would try to deliver the site, you know, if it was your direction to proceed, bring it in as affordably as possible. I think our Parks planners were just demonstrating, you know, just a way to enliven asphalt is through a very affordable option is through some basic paint. So it's not a huge expense, but it's the type of thing that if the direction from council was, you know, deliver this as affordably as possible, that's a thing that could easily be avoided.
It's difficult because you're bringing forward this recommendation that basically is kind of saying this picture and you're putting extra money towards coloring asphalt and making designs on asphalt that may only be there for two years. How much of this project is a throwaway cost versus stuff we could reuse? Because you've talked about us being able to pick up and move some of these pieces once this was ready to be developed. So what percentage or what cost is attributed to reuse versus throwaway?
So through the chair, the major throwaway cost is the surface material, which could be anywhere from, our estimates are half to two-thirds of the cost. The remainder of the costs are for landscaping, armor stone, and any of the sort of plants, the trees and pots, which landscaping provided it's healthy can be relocated. So certainly, half to two-thirds would likely be a sunken cost.
Was there any consideration given to using this opportunity as a public art contest to cover the fence, potentially by students that would decrease the amount of ISO and we could put it on a stable fence and that potentially the developer could pay for that installation cost because they would have no removal costs or no costs to have this done to the outside of the fence for the short duration? Was any consideration given to that option?
Through the chair, that's essentially one of the options laid out in option number one. So the cost to erect a fence alone is roughly almost $10,000. And then, yeah, there's certainly different options for adding life to that, to those boards, whether that's an actual artist or whether that's through a high school program or you name it, there's sort of a variety of different ways that we could bring that fence to life.
But that's zero cost, right? Because what I see is the city could install a wooden fence. Why can't we just keep the fence that's there, which would be zero cost, and then use our staff resources to implement some sort of public art contest to try and animate the space and make it a little bit more visually appealing for the next year to two years?
Through the chair, that's certainly viable, and perhaps offline, you could describe the type of public art you might envision on that space, but it's certainly not out of the realm of possibility.
I would leave that up to the experts to develop what that public art would look like, but I see that as our lowest cost option moving forward to try and animate and beautify the space in a shorter term. So if it gets to that at some point in time, I will make that recommendation.
Counselor Etherington, Mr. Wilmer is looking to speak.
Mr. Wilmer. Through the chair, the reason the staff brought this report forward is because we had heard from council a general interest in animating city spaces through things such as pop-up parks and specifically in discussions around the Mayfair, the merits of potentially using it as an urban park space. So if now that council has seen more detail related to the cost and what you would get for that cost, if you're not inclined to go there, I think you have enough information to approve or refuse this. I'm not hearing a whole lot that would indicate there's good reasons to defer it.
Okay, so you've got Councillors Davey, Iainis, Marsh and Fernandez.
And I think those are all comments, am I correct? I had one question I wanted to ask. So my question is to Cory. Cory, considering the increase in development value on this site, that's my opinion, including the removal of a heritage encumbrance, are you satisfied we've done everything possible to get the owner who benefited from this to contribute towards any cost on this site beyond what we already know about?
Through the chair, I believe I have. Again, I mean, to be clear, it wasn't Mr. Nymer's choice to demolish the building, there is obviously, we all know the history of what led to the demolition. So, you know, from his eyes, you know, he feels, you know, he's lost the building as much as everybody else has. So I would suggest that, I mean, could there be small contributions? Yes, I don't believe Mr. Nymer would be willing to invest significant amounts into something that he may or may not get value of from later on. But again, I hate to speak for the man who is not here and sort of speak on his behalf, I would just simply say that we've tried our best to go down that road.
Okay, he did, he created the illusion in this chamber as to what he would do with that site once the building came down, so that's what prompts my question. My one other quick question is, we're talking here about $60,000 to $70,000. I'm puzzled on that when it involves probably our labor, furniture, trees, landscaping. You said earlier it's mostly the asphalt, am I correct?
That's correct.
Everything else is coming from us?
Yeah, there's still certainly a labor charge to assemble all of it, but really, it's the surface material is the main cost issue.
Okay, thank you very much. And so now we'd move to comments.
Hold on, Counselor Etherington, Mr. Wilmer has his, you're on again.
Sorry.
Oh, you're not meant to be, okay. So you have Councillors Davey, Iainis, Marsh and Fernandez.
On a point of procedure, should we look at the deferral before the comments or after the comments?
So normally, what you do if somebody's making a motion to defer is you allow people to make comments and hold the deferral till then. Counselor Marsh has also indicated that she has a question.
One question, yeah. Counselor Marsh.
So, Mr. Bloom, the asphalting, that cost that you referred to, is that from within our own department? That would be within our own resources?
Through the chair, no, but we obtained estimates from three of the main asphalt companies that we work with and they all gave us a relatively similar price, and our in-house forces have said that they wouldn't be able to deliver it for much cheaper. So the price that we're showing you is the lowest we could bring in front of you, it's the best we could do in terms of bringing a cost down to something affordable.
Whether it's internal or external?
That's correct, and our, just to clarify, our internal forces, this is a site bigger and not the typical site that they would deal with for asphalt, so they don't necessarily have the right equipment that some of the major road crews have. So they are a little bit hesitant about whether they would even have the equipment to deal with a site as large as this, and they would suggest if you did it, you defer it to one of the major companies that are familiar with this type of application.
Okay, thank you.
Final question from Mayor Benovich.
Thanks, actually, two questions. So Cory, earlier on, I believe, the question was asked about whether or not this, well, a couple of questions were asked. One is, could the portion, could there be discussion with the owner around the contributions he would have to make to completing the site go towards this project? And secondly, is there a way of doing this for less money? And did you say that in both of those instances, you could go back and look at those?
Through the chair, we can certainly ask. What I would suggest, I mean, we've done our own costing out about how much we think it would cost to saw the site, and it's $3,500 to $5,000. So in the grand scheme of the costs that we're looking at, it's not a major part of that cost. So even if you were to ask Mr. Nymer to contribute the value of the grass, it's, you know, $3,500 to $5,000.
How many square feet is the site?
Through the chair, it is, I gotta do the math in my head, it is 20 meters by 40 meters, so you're looking at about 8,000 square feet. If memory serves me correctly, I don't have my scale in front of me.
Okay, and then my other question is, is any of the thinking around this in terms of a space at all impacted by the fact that we know for this year, we're not gonna, there are going to be some challenges to closing parts of King Street at various points in time because of other streets being closed? And so are you looking at this potentially as event space for any of the festivals and special events?
Through the chair, yes. What we understand from our conversations with the region is that we will have a significantly smaller footprint for our festivals and events this year. In fact, there's only about a block and a half of King Street that we'll be able to close on most event nights, and that's simply bus and emergency vehicles and other vehicles that need to access the core, because Duke Street and Charles Street are both under construction, that really, there's limited space for us to run our festivals. So one of the advantages of us doing this this year and next would be to provide more space for those festivals.
Okay, thank you.
So now we're at comments. I would ask people to just keep their comments tight, we're running very late on this side. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, the first with comments was...
Mr. Chair, do you want me to...
Well, he has to recognize you.
Sure.
Yeah, let's do that.
Just so that we can try and wrap everything, wrap everything up, just put the motion, I think it makes sense.
What's that?
The public art contest. Just if deferral fails, I just wanted to put my motion forward so everyone can kind of give their comments on everything all at once and then we can move forward with the votes. That's all. Trying to speed it up. So it just basically says that staff move forward with developing a public art contest to be installed on the current fencing at 11 Young Street. This will help to improve the site of the property. Staff be directed to do so at minimal cost and look to the property owner to assist with costs due to the previous commitments around landscaping of the site.
Is this counsel in addition to what we're looking at on the site? Or does it replace what's on?
Replaces everything, it's a whole new motion.
Okay.
So you have Councillors Davey, Iainis, Fernandez, Yonetski and Marsh.
Counselor Davey, comments?
Thank you, I want to start by saying, as Mr. Nymer's in here, there's been some things said, and I want to be clear that at no point has anyone indicated that he was not willing to hold up his agreement in the demolition permit, there was simply a question of whether he could or not. So I want to be clear on that point. What I, I'm a little concerned because what I was, my thinking is along the lines of Counselor, sorry, Counselor Galway Selach's motion about minimizing the costs and looking at public art contest. I was thinking, and I'm not a professional in this area, so I don't know how much better it is to have a wood fence versus a wire fence that was existing, so my hope would be that, or suggestion would be that any money that Mr. Nymer is going to put towards the grass or the removal of the asphalt would go to cover off partial costs of the wood fence, I think that's appropriate. On a go-forward basis, I think this is seeing a lot of controversy because basically, I didn't expect this to be before us. I understand why, I understand the desire to beautify the downtown and the timelines, but I think on a go-forward basis, it might have been a simple committee item that said, we can't grow grass there as we once hoped, do you want us to look at programming the space and investing more money or not? And then we could have went through and done this work. It is a great proposal, I just don't... I just don't like spending this amount of money without a whole bunch of forethought, and especially in a place where it's temporary. I mean, and again, I got to compare it to the fact where we could, this would pay for a new playground and a half that we need to desperately replace elsewhere in the city. And that's kind of how I balance these things. So I think I will not be, yeah, I'm not going to be supporting the deferral. I will support this idea of that they'll have minimal or no cost of looking at the public art. I think that's appropriate. And at some point in the future, if this needs to be revisited, there's nothing stopping us from doing that.
Who's next?
Ionidis, councillor Ionidis.
Yeah, through you, Chair Etherington. First of all, I just want to thank Mr. Bloom and the rest of the staff who worked on this. You know, I don't, I know this is the stuff we kind of, we pushed first, for, out of the thinking box, out of the thinking, out of the box from our staff. And this is something that is along those lines, and I can definitely appreciate that. The reason why I want to bring, put forward, rather not a deferral but a referral, I want to refer it back to committee for the May 30th. I don't want to deal with this issue again for too long. I think we need to make a decision on it. And the reason why I want to refer it to May 30th is because I think the public should have a little more time to digest this. And for myself, I think that there was other sites that could be used, in particular across the street, if we had, if we did some investigation on there. I don't know what the circumstances are there, but I think if we were to investigate what those are across the street, I'd rather give another $30,000 more and make something more usable across the street, and that will be there for 10 years instead of just something that's two years. And the kicker for me is the indemnifying of the owner of their liability. And to me, that is a huge bonus to any landowner. And I know personally from my own experience having property downtown, if you would have given me that, I would have been, no, thank you. Thanks for giving me that. And I think that's a huge bonus. And I think if you go to any other property owner who, across the street, and you said, hey, I will demify you, I think they'd be willing participants. And it makes their property look more attractive. So at the end of the day, I think we could look at this at a better option. Because I think across the street would make much more sense for Canada Day, for Oktoberfest, for Kris Kingle, for Blues. It's just right there where the stage is, you have the audiences. It would enhance Carl Serra Square. It just makes so much more sense to me. If the referral fails, I will definitely be supporting the councillor Seelock's amendment because I can't personally support something that's that much money for a couple of years. It's just, even though I like the idea, the concept, if it was something a little longer term, then I could probably think otherwise. A little more like a 10-year timeframe, I could justify it.
You have councillor Fernandez next.
Councillor Fernandez.
Well, I guess in some ways I'm a little bit speechless because I think that, it won't stop me from making my comments, though. This is incredible. What landowner, what business, wouldn't be jumping up and down with glee saying the city of Kitchener is going to pay to fix up my property, make it look nice, I won't have any liability, and yippee skippy. He made a commitment here in these chambers that he was going to beautify that lot. The libots heard it, we heard it, the public heard it, the media heard it. And now he's saying, oh, you know, the grass isn't going to grow there. Well, I'm sorry, there's lots of places that the grass doesn't grow, so figure something else out. We as a city, as taxpayers, should not spend one nickel on this. It's his property, it's private property. I, it galls me to think that we're going to be spending even $1,000. Mr. Niemeyer, put a fence around your property, you have the liability. And maybe you'll be kind enough to let some students come and paint a mural on it so that it looks nice. But if not, it won't be any different than the number of sites that we drive past in our city that either have hoarding up or don't have hoarding, that are empty lots, that are vacant lots, that are full of gravel, that are full of debris. It won't be any different. So, you know, I appreciate the work that staff has gone into. 25 hours is roughly what we're thinking. Maybe it should, it definitely should have come to committee first. It should have definitely come to us as a point of discussion about, you know, so that the public could have some input, so that even Mr. Niemeyer could be here, at least in attendance, giving us the reasons of why he could not take care of his own property and that we should be taking care of it. So, you know, I'm not supporting, I wouldn't support a deferral. I'm not supporting councillor Galloway-Seelock's motion because we shouldn't be spending any money on this. It's not our property.
Point of clarification, for the record, it's not Mr. Niemeyer, it's Mr. Nymer. Just for that, for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I make, is there any other?
You have councillors Janetski and Marsh next.
Councillor Janetski.
Well, it's rather interesting here that, I know the property's been sitting around for a whole year, and I know we should be addressing it, and of course, we are doing that right now. But I didn't realize that we're going to be doing it at taxpayers' expense, which I'm not really in support of, spending $60,000 to $70,000. When I look at the, that drawing there, boy, it's nice to have, it looks good. And of course, Bernie Nymer would also be very happy on that, too. It comes back to last year's demolition, that he would be responsible for fixing it up, making it reasonable. We're talking about grass not being suitable. Well, I should point out that on King Street, right by the former TD Bank, TD Canada building, where Krabby Joe's was, is a parking lot that is, was created from demolitions that happened many, many years ago. And along the King Street frontage, there's a grass section with two or three park benches. And people sit there and just enjoy the traffic going by. Of course, 80% of the balance of the property is used as a parking lot, but you do have a green space right along the King Street corridor. We could do sort of the same thing here. But I think the better option would be, or the better resolution would be to have the property owner asphalt the facility, because that would be the best way of doing it, and make it reasonable for use. If the city wants to take a step further and put on some planters and green it up with the planters and flowers and some bushes, et cetera, that'd be fine. We can get into an agreement and maybe even provide them some indemnity on that. That would be good. But, you know, that expense would be his. The planter pots and shrubs, we can bring them in in those pots and then take them out later. It's a cost that really wouldn't be to the taxpayer in the long run. So I'm not prepared to support, actually, the first motion by Kelly Galloway-Seelock on the public art. I don't think that's the right way to go. I'm not prepared to support a deferral. I'm going back to the original one, where option two, the requirement from the property owner to fulfill his conditions and asphalt it as best as possible.
Marsh.
Councillor Marsh, comments?
Thank you. As one of the downtown councillors, I sit on the BIA, and I'm aware of the direct impacts on many of the businesses that are along the construction route. And we need to provide opportunities for these businesses to showcase what they have in places where thousands of people happen to walk by. There's walking traffic every day at this site. And that's what sets this site apart from many other vacant lots that were referred to earlier in the conversation. This is not our property, that's true. And it is a temporary thing, and I can see that that is hard to swallow. But I would also add that we're going to see the public coming from all over the city and beyond, coming downtown, expecting to see the same amount of space being used for our many, many festivals. We are a city of festivals, and it's going to be a tight squeeze because of all of the diverted, because of the constricted amount of closed traffic that we're going to be able to allow. I will support councillor Ionidis's referral to committee because I do think that it's worth asking staff to go back and look at what would be the cost, to have further conversations, to see how we might be able to shift this project, to make it easier to swallow. And if that does not pass, I will also suggest that we defer or amend this other motion by councillor Galloway-Seelock just to provide more flexibility to staff because it's quite specific at the moment. I think that if we are going to rely on the experts, we should allow them a bit more flexibility rather than being overly prescriptive. I do like the idea, but I think that we need to allow a bit more flexibility there. And regarding the space across King Street, I always wondered why we don't use that space, too. I really always thought that it should be, you know, at least grassed over and put some park benches. But when I asked about that at the very beginning of my term, I was, I understood that that would be too, there were many problems with that. But also, I will add that my understanding is that the properties, that there are two properties there, at least one of them is in play. And it's not going to be something that will be vacant for much longer. It's not something that we can really look into for the long term, anyway.
And I wanted to make one fast, last, hopefully, comment, and then ask the mayor for the order we should do.
Councillor Etherington, before you do, you have councillor Galloway-Seelock in the queue. And I also want to make comments, so if you want to hold yours as chair till the end?
Sure, councillor Galloway-Seelock.
I know you're chomping at the bit, and it's probably one of the worst topics for you to be chair because you want to get your comments out there. So I do appreciate that in taking your turn as chair. My idea with my motion isn't to be overly directive, to give staff some flexibility around creating some sort of public art contest to be put on fencing. I'm not going to sit here and say I know what that contest should look like. But I think it's about public art in that space to try and come up with a solution that will help improve the site of the property because we will have people in the area. But in the short term, we have one year where everything's going to have to be a little compact. And I think that everyone's going to have to adapt to that. And using this space really isn't giving us that much more space. And at the cost of $70,000, that's pretty significant to anybody for the constrictions that you'll feel for one year. And I think everyone's going to understand that with regards to all the construction that's going on in our downtown to move forward with the LRT project. I think we do have to be cognizant of the fact that there's many construction zones throughout, or demolition sites or vacant lots throughout the city. And while we pride ourselves on trying to bring everyone downtown, I think it's a hard sell to turn around and spend $70,000, of which we heard that 50 to 75% of that is throwaway cost and the cost of asphalting. There, we've also heard from staff that the cost of seeding and grassing that is far less than 50 to 75% because we're talking about $35,000, which is not the same cost to seed and grow grass on that property. And so I don't think the property owner is willing to commit those kinds of dollars to asphalting a site, but may look at being able to demo it because they got to build a, they got to build a hole in the floor, sorry, in the ground anyways to build their new development, whatever that may be. I think this is a low-cost option that we can partner with people in the community to come up with a solution that can get us through the short term while Mr. Nymer looks at a redevelopment plan. I think he's getting a little bit of a bad rap here tonight. Unfortunately, he's not here to speak for himself. I think we need to continue to work with him and the site, but I think that, quite honestly, this is a viable opportunity. I think referring it to May 30th is going to take us a lot longer because it's going to come to May 30th, and then there's going to be a bunch more work that has to be done. And we're not going to be able to move anything forward within a timely manner by the time our festival season hits. And so I think we need to just move forward with a direction today in order to help assist from a perspective of improving the site, but at the least amount of risk to us and the least amount of cost at the most, what I see as the best option with something that we can move forward with, with regards to the motion around the public art.
Mayor Benovic.
Thank you. I will be supporting the referral on this issue because I do think that there is more work that can be done on this. I think some work needs to be done in dialogue with the property owner in terms of what portion of this they potentially can be paying. I also think there's work that can be done to look at what things can we do to potentially bring the cost of this down. You know, people often talk about wanting to see a diversity of economic opportunities. Well, one of the things that appealed to me from the work that staff did on this was the notion of actually creating an opportunity for some pop-up businesses that would then potentially grow and find new locations, whether in the downtown or in other parts of the city in the future, if they in fact were able to become successful. I mean, we saw that happen with Legacy Greens as an example, that did a pop-up business in one of the storefronts in the downtown, became successful and have stayed in operation going forward. So I think we need to look at that piece of it. You know, there may be some things we can do with public art, as councillor Galloway-Seelock is suggesting, to help bring the cost down, but also animate the space. It's a complex issue, quite frankly, that involves a variety of factors. It involves economic development, it involves downtown vitality, particularly at a time when people are looking at making investments and we want to instill an air of confidence in them so that we continue to see those investments happening. Because those are investments that are going to generate significant tax dollars for the community. So I think council needs to consider all of those things. Having said that, though, I do think some more work needs to be done, and so I will be supporting the referral. If it fails, then I would be inclined to, at the very least, see us look at what's being suggested here because I do know that this property does generate a fair bit of negative comment from the community. I think the other thing the referral would allow us to do is to provide the opportunity for other members of the community to come forward and speak, including the BIA and others, who, you know, probably would have some strong views on this issue.
And finally, I get to make my comment. I was going to say, I too will support the referral because I suspect that the original recommendation, some of which I like very much, I suspect that will fail. So I'd rather see us refer it to committee than see that fail. As a downtown councillor, and like councillor Marsh, a BIA member, or a representative on the BIA from this council, I very, very much want to see this site central, key site, animated. I'd like to see other downtown sites equally animated for people and festivals. But I would also like to see the property owner pay more toward the cost of whatever improvements we make. That's it in a nutshell, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd ask for your guidance on what order we take. Should take the deferral first?
Well, you'd have to take the referral first. And then if it fails, then you would deal with councillor Galloway-Seelock's motion.
And then the staff recommendation? Would we overtake councillor Ionidis?
Well, if the referral fails, yes, I guess this is being presented as the alternative to staff's recommendation, so you wouldn't go to staff's recommendation.
Okay. Correct, Colin?
Through the mayor.
I'm the chair.
Through the chair, yes, Mayor Benovic is correct.
Okay. So councillor Ionidis, your referral, do you want to put that on the table? Okay, so we'll vote first on the referral, which is to re- Okay. So we'll vote first on the referral, which is to refer it to the committee of May thirtieth. Those in, hang on one moment.
Mr. Bloom has his, he's requesting to speak.
For a point of clarity, the report deadline for May thirtieth would be this Thursday, so as long as there's no expectation of a staff report, it's, it would have to be information that we would have to bring to council as soon as we can before May thirtieth, but it's probably unrealistic that we would resolve these issues by Thursday of this week.
Okay, so the motion is the thirtieth. Oh, sorry, Counselor Atherton, you're in the chair.
Okay. We're staying with that, Dave?
You know, I don't want to, I don't want to keep this, belabor on this issue. I think we need to make a decision, but it doesn't really give us much time if everything has to be in by Thursday. So I'll leave it until June sixth, then. I'll refer, defer it to, to council meeting, then.
Those in favor of the ref-
Recorded votes requested.
Recorded vote requested. Those in favor of the referral?
Considering that it's being referred to council, I would like to make sure that then the motion that I put forward is then become direction to staff, to be included in the report. That is, to come back now on June the sixth as an option to look at for this property. And it doesn't have to be contest. The word can be solution, a public art solution. I was going on the fly, and that was the word that came to mind. So if we can have that.
I presume that would happen. Is that okay, Mr. Bloom? Thank you.
Can we get that just as a motion, so that we can give that formal direction to staff?
Okay. Do you want to make that motion?
I am making that motion by way of my current motion, that it becomes direction to staff.
Those in favor of the motion? Those again?
Moved at the committee, rise and report. All in favor?
All in favor. There are no additional items. So I would ask that the committee rise and report.
That's already done. So now you, so now you read the line.
I wanted to do it twice, Mr. Bloom.
Okay.
I don't get much opportunity. That the proceedings and the recorded pecuniary interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the whole health estate as attached hereto and forming part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed.
All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Janetski, second by Counselor Ionitis, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time. We finally pass a numbered series by the clerk, and that also includes bylaw from committee of the whole number three, because number three included first and second reading. So this is the third reading for that one. All in favor? Actually, I didn't ask who, oh, no, I do have, sorry, all in favor, opposed, that's carried. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Fernandez, all in favor, opposed, that's carried.